Of the new year, Preston County Commission. Today is January second, two thousand twenty-four, and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all three commissioners are present. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Stone. At this time, we're going to move forward with the election of the president. At this time, I would like to move that we elect Don Smith as president for the two thousand twenty-four year of the Preston County Commission.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to elect Don Smith as the president of the Preston County Commission for two thousand twenty-four. Is there any additional discussion? All right, I would just like to note for the record that last year we did discuss that at our statutory meeting at the beginning of the year, and we had decided then to rotate that. And so, as we discussed last year, looks like this will be the first of your two year term. Lord willing.
Lord willing is right.
And then we don't rise. So we'll go ahead with that rotation and take that to vote. Commissioner Stone, yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
All right.
The problem is you're too. That's fine, I don't have to give you the meeting. I will give you your phone just in case something happens. First off, I want to thank Samantha. She's done an excellent job as president for the last couple of years. And it's, you know, we didn't thank you enough for all the hard work you've done.
Thank you, Don.
All right, at this time, I guess we're going to go into the, I guess, the housekeeping procedures for this coming year. And breaking down the date and time of the county commission meetings. As we have in the past, we're proposing that Tuesday at nine thirty will be our meeting date unless it's a holiday. And it'll be pushed back to Wednesday. Notice of meetings will be posted as always. And if I have a motion, if I have a motion for that, I think it's two motions technically. One for the day of the week.
At this time, I move to approve the date and time of our county commission meetings from Tuesday at nine thirty a.m. There's a conflict on Tuesday, we will try to move it to Wednesday.
Second.
You seconded it, so.
Oh, oh, did I? Oh, okay. I said, do I have a second?
I thought you said I seconded.
I'm sorry, do I have a second?
Yes, I will second that.
Say it louder, I'm sorry. Mr. No, I'm welcome to.
Mr. Thomas, yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Yes. And now, if I have a motion, if I can have, if I could have a motion for notice of meetings.
At this time, I move to approve our notice of meetings.
Second.
I will second that.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes. Legal holidays, as we have an attachment. You can have a copy of that.
This time, I made a motion to approve the list of the legal holidays for the courthouse and the courthouse annex for the two thousand twenty-four year.
Second.
Mission of the floor in a second to approve the legal holidays. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. All right, meeting procedures.
Do we need a motion?
We do have a motion, we do need a motion. It's just basically to accept them. We're not making any changes, basically how, you know, going with how we proceed in the meetings and the procedures we use for anybody wishing to vote, speak publicly.
Okay, at this time, I agree to approve the meeting procedures as they have been presented. No changes have been made this year.
I will second that motion.
Motion of the floor in a second to approve the meeting procedures. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes. And also the hours of operation, which they basically will remain the same. Monday, with the extended hours of opening from eight thirty until five thirty. And then Tuesday through Friday, it'll be eight thirty through four thirty. And if I have a motion to approve said times.
So that's, oh, go ahead.
Second.
Second. All right, motion of the floor in a second to approve the hours of operation of the annex. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. And hours of operation of the courthouse. Their hours are slightly different because they are set by basically the spring quarter. So that's why their hours are from eight thirty to four thirty is clarified. So if I have a motion to approve said hours of operation.
Second.
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 Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Hours of operation of courthouse. And now, maybe down to appoint or reappoint of the various commissioners to the various boards and committees. And just to go over if there's any.
Yeah, I believe we're just going to stay with what we had last year because we're all acclaimed into the committees we're on and doing great work in that capacity. So I'm fine.
All right, at this time, I make a motion to reappoint the commissioners to the boards and committees that they served on for two thousand twenty-three, for the new two thousand twenty-four year.
Second. All right, and we have a motion in a second to reappoint the commissioners to the selected boards as they presently stand for two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Do we have anybody from the public to be recognized? I don't think so.
Do you need to address the commission? All right, perfect.
All right, review of the bills.
At this time, I'm going to update the bills that have been properly presented and reviewed.
I will second that motion.
Mission of the floor in a second to approve said bills. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes. Do you not have anything from the accessory agents this morning?
No.
Thank you, you could, you're hiding back there now.
I am. It's okay.
All right, and now, let me just count our scheduled appointments. Just a couple of them is behind, but not too bad. And that was Mr. Hunter Mullins, Mullins and Mullins, distribution of the opioid settlement money. Hunter?
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. If I have the checks on me now, I have a check with me, so. I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and give you another copy of the memorandum of understanding or the letter from the fund administrator that came with the check. And this is the same memorandum of understanding.
Same thing we have before.
Yes. And so, so basically, I just want to thank the county commission for your professionalism, working through this long time of this litigation. Now, this is the first check. It's a check for five hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and sixty-four cents. So there will be other checks after that. I don't know if you remember, this is twenty-four and a half percent of what is allocated to the Preston County. The other seventy-two and a half percent went to the first fund down Charleston, which we can apply for grants for. So hopefully, I'm more than happy to, questions, work with you to help facilitate.
We have a work session for opioid funding coming up on the tenth, January tenth.
Right, you're headed to Gert, that's great.
I just want to thank you, and this is long before my time, and maybe before all our times. Yeah, for all your hard work.
I mean, the first time, it'll be a long time ago. We started this.
Has it been a long time since?
No, it has, it's been a lot of work, but West Virginia did, we were able to get the most funds per capita in the nation, which was worth it. As you remember at the beginning, Don, we were doing, it was whether or not we take the national settlement.
Yeah, and a lot of people took the cookie cutter stuff in West Virginia, decided not to do that because really it was based populations that were really undercutting the amount of money that West Virginia would have got, even though, and New Hampshire would have been in the same boat, really, because they have a very high incidence of opioids too. Both states said no.
That's right. And things have just worked out, because this litigation could have taken another ten, fifteen years.
Oh, yeah.
Easily. So, and there are, you know, you can use part of this, the half of it, to reimburse yourself for the regional jail bill and law enforcement costs. We need a resolution when you go to do that, so I can prepare the resolution when you're prepared.
I don't think we, we haven't made any official decisions yet.
Right.
We're going to try to make the best decision for accounting along last.
I know part of what, there is that meeting coming up between the end of the month with the regional.
That you're on.
Opioid thing, and we're going to go to, we're going to get with that. And because that's where you're going to take the rest of the money and have to marry, try to marry it up with the grants and try to build a bigger thing regionally or whatever to, for treatment and for provision and everything, so. A lot of work still ahead for the county.
I had to travel to Oakland, this is just something that I've traveled to Oakland's a good, but every time I would come back, I would see you on the board, like, hey, I know that, I know that, you know, always good to know.
I saw your sign on the way through Barbara County.
But we do appreciate your work for the county. You have been very informational and keeping us on track and everything that we needed to do, so thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. It's a pleasure working with you, you're the fresh, I'd love to know.
Thank you.
I have the check here to present to you.
All right.
Like I said, there's only more checks coming in the future, but this is what we chomped up before. Yeah, exactly. Thanks, sir. All right, you want to?
Do you want a picture?
I need a picture.
Let's get a, let's get a picture, let's step down.
I think you deserve a picture.
I think you deserve a picture. Good. Samantha's blinking a little bit. There we go.
The person's right.
All right. Thank you. Down there to get the property, and we just had to give you the check and you can't be in today.
Yep.
Safe travels back. All right, that brings us now to our next appointment, which is with our prosecuting attorney, Mr. Jay Shae, employee hire. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How are you all? Happy New Year. Thanks for putting me on the agenda today. What I would like to ask is for consent from the county commission to hire the replacement for Kara Beasley, who left our office. She's, she was previously employed as the legal assistant in my office, and I would like to replace her with Kristi Hertzel, who, as you're aware, previously worked for Sheriff Pritt for a number of years. I would like to hire her at the annual salary amount of thirty-seven thousand, which would come up to twenty dollars and thirty-three cents an hour. It would be effective yesterday, it would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Backdated to yesterday.
Right, I got you.
At this time, I'm going to approve the hire for Kristi Hertzel in the prosecuting attorney's office for the annual salary of thirty-seven thousand a year. Comes up to twenty dollars an hour.
Twenty dollars, thirty-three cents.
Thirty-three cents an hour, effective January first.
I will second that motion.
Mission of the floor in a second to approve the employee hire for the prosecuting attorney. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a letter that we can have, that we can stamp? Do we have that? Do we have the letter that you sent to us?
I did an amended, I did an amended wage compensation statement, which I sent to.
As long as we have it, we know.
As long as we get, we don't have any, I didn't get any email or what. I knew who it was, but I didn't get that.
We don't have it.
I might, so.
Okay.
You can just get.
I have a copy over here if you want.
That would work, that was on it, and that's all we need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, thank you. All right. We're on time. We have Sheriff Paul Pritt for employee hire. Good morning.
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 Good morning.
Switching people around. This is, this is to seek your advice and consent in the hiring of Kim Baller as an administrative assistant at the Preston County Sheriff's Office. Ms. Baller will occupy a full-time position with benefits beginning immediately January second. I dated it today, two thousand twenty-four. And I didn't put the pay in, we could afford to do some adjustment, adjustments overall. And I'll, I'll get that.
Okay.
It's in your budget, though, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, at this time, I make a motion to hire Kim Baller as an administrative assistant for the Preston County Sheriff's Office. She will occupy a full-time position with benefits beginning immediately January second, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion of the floor in a second to approve the hire of Ms. Baller. Sheriff. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I make a motion to approve the minutes for December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Mission of the floor in a second to approve the minutes for December twelfth. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
At this time, I'm going to approve the state settlement list for December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, for Golden and Alum.
I will second that.
We have a motion of the floor in a second to approve the state's settlement list for December eighteenth. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes. That's down with proceedings and vacation.
This time, I make a motion to dispense with the readings of the proceedings and vacation and enter them into record and open court session for December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, through December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Mission of the floor in a second to dispense with the reading of PIBs and set them into record. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Nothing from the fiduciary commissioner at this time, nothing on her old business. It brings us down to new business. And that is the resignation of Peggy Pace from Salt Wasteland. She, there's a little bit of a thing, she had sent, she's, but it was never received originally. She had sent a resignation back in August, apparently, but it never got anywhere. So she, I reached out to her, and she sent an updated one for the date from the other day, which was right in her Christmas. So at this time, right now, that is a position that is to be appointed by the county commission. We don't have anybody at the moment. I've, I've asked other members of the, of the authority if they know of anybody that would like to serve on it, to reach out to them and, you know, get the names. So, and there's meeting coming up tomorrow night, so we'll see what proceeds happen there, so.
Thank you, Don.
All right, that brings us down to Garage at this time, and it brings down our county coordinator's report. Mr. Ray Betten.
Yep. Happy New Year to all of you. This will be, there are no budget revisions for miscellaneous correspondence. So the only thing we have is sort of the calendar, specifically for January and February. Just to revisit the Board of Equalization and Review Schedule, which will be the last item in your packet that we have. This has been sent to the state, and the state we're awaiting their approval.
Right.
Or, you know, reassessment of dates at the beginning of January, which we knew we wouldn't get by today. But just to review those, the first session would be Thursday, February first, two thousand twenty-four, from ten to eleven a.m. The second is Wednesday, February seventh, ten a.m. to eleven a.m. The third would be Tuesday, February thirteenth, ten to eleven a.m. Fourth is Friday, February sixteenth, five to six p.m. And then Tuesday, February twentieth, is scheduled for our ten a.m. state of West Virginia minerals, which an alternative date for the minerals is actually scheduled for the ten a.m. block on February thirteenth, if we don't need that. Now, that also takes us to our conference schedule. The county commissioners' meeting is scheduled from January twenty-first to January twenty-third. The West Virginia Association of Counties meeting is scheduled from February fourth to February sixth. The reason those need to be brought up is those are Tuesday ending. So the recommendation from the county administrator would be that we simply move the standard meeting for the week of the twenty.
Twenty-fourth?
Four, to the twenty-fourth on Wednesday. And the seventh, but at nine a.m.
On the seventh?
On the seventh. And the recommendation for that would be, if we had to have the Board of Equalization at ten, instead of having people come at different days, we could have everything at one long stretch.
That makes sense, yeah.
So with your approval, that is how I would like to adjust the calendar. The only other thing that needed to get mentioned is President's Day is February nineteenth, and so that does affect a little bit of our scheduling for the minerals because we can't meet on that day, so that's why that day is on the twentieth and not on the nineteenth.
I don't have issues with that, Nate. How about the, how about the Tuesday, February thirteenth meeting date? Are we wanting to move that meeting to nine o'clock?
Uh, I mean, we, we certainly could. That's probably a wise idea to go ahead and move that to, unless you would want to have that on a separate day. Ideally, we would just do them both at ten o'clock. But we're holding the thirteenth as sort of our alternative day. We have it listed there, depending on what people need.
Just leave it.
Just leave it.
Standard if we need to adjust.
We can adjust it at that time.
Yeah, we have plenty of time to adjust it, because here's, here's another thing, too. The state, depending on what they want to do, they may say, we want to do it.
Yeah, and that, and that's the thing.
And that's, yeah, and that's the thing, it becomes irrelevant once we hear back from the state.
You won't hear from them until.
Yeah.
We will hear from them till like right before.
Yeah, so we are, we are doing our best to shoot at the dark at this stage.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is, shooting in the door.
But that, and that is the summation of the entire report for this week. Happy two thousand twenty-four to everyone. Thank you.
That's hard to say, two thousand twenty-four.
I have the motion to make these adjustments to our meeting schedule for June and February.
At this time, I am moving to approve the adjustments which were stated by our county administrator for January and February schedule.
I will second that motion.
Mission of the floor in a second to approve the schedule change for January, February dates. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes. Personal matter, legal matter.
Just to make sure I have this written down correctly. January twenty-third meeting is moving to January twenty-fourth.
And that's standard nine thirty.
That's standard.
Association of Counties meeting is, we'll move our January, February sixth meeting to the seventh of February at nine a.m.
At nine a.m.
Okay.
Is that all good?
Yep.
That brings us down to miscellaneous correspondence and future comments. Commissioner Stone, do you have anything at this time?
Um, well, yes. So February, or this month, now that we have officially kicked off two thousand twenty-four, I would like to just make the recommendation that we do some heavy follow-up on our ARPA funding that has already been awarded, and that make sure that they're on track to spend it by two thousand twenty-six, because if they are not and things have changed, we need to retract that award back so that we can get that money in a place that it can be used by the time that's been allotted and the rules to the money. And also, we have our money that we need to commit and move so that people don't think it's still out there. We know that most likely we need to utilize the rest of our ARPA funding for courthouse reconfiguration, and with it sitting out there, people just have the assumption that it's still available. I've already received requests from the public asking if there was applications and such that they could acquire some of that money, and I just, I think we need to just clean that up.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's imperative, you and I discussed, it's imperative that we make sure these people know that this year they have had that stuff committed.
Twenty-four and the house.
Yeah, I think, I think the vast majority of the projects are moving right along with their.
As it stands right now, everything is on.
There's ones with the supply chain and, you know, that are delayed, so. Okay. Um, just a couple of things. So we are having a work session for discussion on, we'll work on our fringe benefit and vehicle kind of different policy search thing. We're leaving that as a work session?
Yes.
Okay.
Have we got any decision we can make?
Five p.m.?
No, no, that's at nine thirty.
At nine thirty, okay, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the opioids, okay.
Yeah, and that's what we need.
Nine thirty in the morning. So work session this Thursday, nine thirty a.m. And then I just wanted to confirm, and this doesn't take any official action. It doesn't cost the county anything. Are you guys okay with us taking the initial steps to have active, someone come in to help with active shooter training through Crays? I sent that email out.
I don't have a problem with Crays, but I think that we need to speak with Sheriff Pritt just to make certain that there's nothing that they can do.
Internally.
Internally.
That's the only thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only thing.
Yeah, and so I just took your email as it was an option.
Yeah, well, I think we got a little confused because we talked about it probably a month ago, and you guys said to go ahead, and I, you know.
Yeah, it must have been, just to find those, just to find out the options. But that is a good option, it's free, let's see what our sheriff's department can do for us. And it might be a collaborative effort, you know, so I think that's.
Just to clarify, that we were looking into Alice training. Alice training is very expensive, and I think training's necessary, but paying that much is unnecessary and unwarranted. So I reached out to a guy, which is the OEM director for the city of Bridgeport, and he's certified for Crays training, which is a form of active shooter training. And this program's, like, mission statement is to provide active shooter training for no cost. And he's willing to do it, we just have to.
Get it scheduled.
Get all, get all our ducks in a row, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's imperative we get this done sooner rather than later. And yeah, if we can do it and we get it, work with Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, he, um, he knows a few of the deputies in the sheriff's office, and he said they'd be willing to help.
That'd be great.
I already talked to them. They were really good everybody, and.
Yeah.
And then the only other thing is, well, one more thing. Today, we approved the CARES funding request for Nation Town Vol. Retire Department, which we allocated back in February of last year. So that's all, all our allocations are paid out of CARES funding now.
Yes, that was for, just to remind people, that was for their first responder. There's a P associated with getting that official.
Yeah, they have an EMS.
They finally provided the invoice to us, so take care of it.
Yeah, so we're caught up on that, too. And then another big thing is we're going to be starting our courthouse reconfiguration project and starting the bidding process for that. So that's going to be a huge undertaking that has to be done by two thousand twenty-five to see the second judge. And that's all I have, other than happy New Year, happy two thousand twenty-four. I'll try to put the right here on my paperwork. It'll take a couple of months.
And they used to say, when you enter check, you'll break twenty-four on the first twenty checks automatically, and then you don't have to worry about it. All right, wrap it up. Our work session again is going to be at nine thirty on Thursday. Please, you know, that encouraged all the officers that we, you know, you guys here to read that and make sure there's any input or anything that's necessary. Please, you know, please bring your questions or qualifications or whatever. When we, when we send you in, and I will mention one thing, any change we really made to our legal holidays is, and I'll get on my soapbox, and I don't really care. The governor has really been really bad this past year about, at the last second, declaring days off for state employees, which really threw things out of whack. I mean, I'm not lying, when you, when he announces it the day before, it really throws big, freaking monkey wrench up. Especially when you got cases outstanding, you got to take care of, and all of a sudden, you got to give everybody a day off. And you have to. And that, that messes up the courts because you got people to think they're going to court that day, and guess what? They're not. It's nothing, you got to get it rescheduled, so this is a real thing. Yeah, and we have nine-one-one, the sheriff, and I can go on and on, it's a big cascading effect. But what we did was, any days that the governor so hereby declares in this coming year, as a special observance, will be observed at the discretion of county commission. That means we have to vote on it. So if he does this last minute second session thing, we're probably not going to have time to vote on it, which means it's probably not going to happen. That being said, we will, if he does plan things out in a normal fashion, we will vote on it. But when he does his last thing, second thing, it's, you know, this is, this is to try to do this. And we're not the only county that has raised this issue. has raised this issue, because there are counties, Jefferson, Berkeley.
Quite a few.
Or they had like, all of a sudden, they had to pay sixty-seven people overtime because of this. That's an enormous chunk of change out of county budget. That's, we could, we have many projects that we could use that money for.
That's true.
So, you know.
It would be different if you planned out the holidays, but the, the night before is unacceptable.
The night before is unacceptable, I'm sorry, you know, three, you know, three o'clock the day before is not acceptable, I'm sorry. You just don't do that, it throws everything, any plan you had is completely thrown out of kilter. So that's the only big change, but thank you for reminding me of that, so.
Well, I've just always, I've always thought it's, it's, it's a nice gesture to your employees when they get that extra time, and I, I will always stand, stand by that, um, and it makes sense when a holiday falls on a Monday, um, that they close in a, you know, if it's consecutive days, it doesn't make sense really when it falls in the middle of a week and he's not closing Friday before, you know, that's kind of crazy, but um it is a way that we can also, so I think it's important that it is at the discretion of the commission that we can talk about it, because sometimes it makes sense to do that, um, and, and we just need to remember that that is a benefit to our employees.
And we all, we all appreciate it, it's just this year it's got, got an.
It got a little out of hand this past year, so, you know, that was a big thing, it was one thing in the past, it was like a day or two here and there, but this year it's got completely like seven, eight days. It was like seven or eight days, yeah. So, um, the only other thing I have is, like I said, there is a Salt Waste Authority meeting tomorrow evening. People are doing some different things, we'll be planning for in a few, for, in spring, the spring cleanup stuff. So we've got that to take into effect. Only said, and I would, I would say this, if there is anyone to be interested to serve on Salt Waste Authority, you know, just contact the county commission office, um, and, uh, you know, give your name and everything, so we can get some names out there and break down the board, the members that are participating are very active and doing a good job, and they're from throughout the county, it isn't like there's some, everybody's in one place. So it's made a big difference, uh, and I hope to continue, to continue on with some of the programs. And lastly, I will take my New Year of Revolution events once again to keep my mouth shut and listen to them, so hopefully that will be done, and I want to thank everybody, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.
I don't think we have the last. CJ.